We'll turn those mics on and it's kind of... We just don't want to do it, yeah?
Yeah, until I find two.
Um, six. I mean, here's working off money to check this.
That's mine. You, you have it there. I'll be there.
I was gonna tell me to send it. Anything is free.
Didn't work. I wasn't interested in that.
What's your, uh...
I'm with you.
What?
He's been interested. He's just straight up stupid. He doesn't...
I'm the dad for it. Who's Chad?
Chad was like, I was just there. He's like, sit through the eight. And he's there. They're pretty good. But he's not working.
We found it.
It was, it was game time.
But his computer said reloading or something like...
Well, what time did you do it? What time did you do it? Cause like I found something and it was... On all maps. Yeah. They've been worn for five days. They're, you know, nobody paid attention to that.
Probably in the corner. We used to connect with them. I'm just teasing. I got no idea. I've never even...
What'd you do if they were going for that?
I'll try that.
I think I used iPhone.
They decided to give me the thing. I had digs. I've known it before. I was like...
Okay, that feels just right.
Is that...
That feels awesome.
I know. It's been a long minute.
You were the first one to kind of...
I had a flat. You get a laptop, right? My first classroom didn't have a desktop.
I just already have the idea.
I don't think so. I think I have a certain thing that would be a company. We got the white, the kids all got their white.
We got the white ones.
I think we got one of those. A lot of the kids. She doesn't make it.
Right, cause that's where I was school and everybody got the same.
Well, we had the white ones. We were in the school.
I appreciate...
I remember being in the hallway of the old school.
We all had that, the white ones. It was kind of piling from the...
I'm older than that. First year, so... Two years. And then I dumped one of my MacBook.
That one's stolen. That one's stolen.
At first I was like, oh damn, I couldn't find it. Now I have a hard time finding it.
I didn't see my Mac. I tried to steal a PC. I don't have a PC though.
I didn't get with the COVID.
I forgot you were out tonight.
Well, I didn't.
You didn't?
No, I, I'm glad I didn't.
Lot less busy last time than last time we... There you go first. Okay. Ladies first. Are you nervous too?
Uh, yeah.
And I'll just stand by when you guys... How's that sound? Does that sound better? Do you have a backpack?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Usually stuff's a bit anxious.
Let's stay out of it.
I think it's...
It's so special.
They're gonna be there.
You would really bother them?
And they're gonna be there.
And you're hearing some of this?
It's mostly done, you know, they don't...
I mean, it, 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 it. I cussed it. I gave the pressure down. I mean, yeah. Rocking.
What birthday was it?
I don't know.
I don't know yet. It's like it hasn't been quite... It's always been like... And the summer's stable.
But I have something else. I love these high heels. Yeah.
Laying down?
What was that? Oh, that's what I was gonna say.
I think the light is right behind.
Oh, light next to the top. Oh. Kind of shiny to your eyes. It's from the face. Oh, it's not bad. That's true. The head is also... On the screen, it's always bright. Oh, right. Oh, that one's bigger than that.
Test one two. Oh, yeah. You're set.
I'm not worried. How many is four? He's down the same door, Steve.
You're just padding your stats, right, Mr. Peterson?
What's that?
Padding your stats. You got a read on there, too.
There we go.
I'll, I'll initiate. I'd say I left it. I'm not gonna say your names.
They're gonna say that. You both, you both have your names.
Yes, he says it. Yes, she says it.
I was gonna say we have to do this.
So what are the names?
Henry Hogan.
What's the last name?
Hogan.
H O G M A N.
And can we... K I S. Can we search? Seems like...
H A R D.
Y I.
I don't know. Just a midline. Don't like to miss out very many things.
And it's...
K I N. Notice. And what I wish that nobody could fucking do that. Dude, which is... Of course, this child's about right, too. So those two aren't...
What? Yeah. I feel like that's not sure. I don't need it anymore.
You know, she's that sexy. He hasn't really made it known. You know what I mean?
I'm gonna like tonight.
Is that one yours?
Yes, sir.
Two more. Oh, we got a crowd. They gotta wait for the bosses.
They must have heard you were here.
Boy, I don't have... What do you got a voucher for? I don't know.
Spent some time with mom last week.
Oh, yeah, would you?
Oh, yeah. You were part of that, part of that group, right? Yeah, okay. She's doing that pad.
Yeah.
Twenty years.
That is.
That's quite far. And we've got, we've got temporary custody. Come this way, I'm sure.
I don't know. I brought this one.
Wow, he's ready to go. Just chopping his bit. Yeah. Okay. I apologize, we ran a little bit long in the executive session.
Dave's more wanted.
Yeah. Don't know who's me this time.
I don't think so.
Uh, but I need to call to order the Unica County School District Number One Board of Trustees' School Board Meeting. And I need a motion to go into said meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion. I have a second. Take your pick, Dave or Jenny.
I don't care.
Jenny. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I would like to take a, a, a moment to turn the time over to, uh, uh, Mr. Wheeler. Uh, he has a few things to share with us.
Chairman Peterson, thank you. Uh, I would just like to take a minute. And, uh, we all know what day this is. But to take, uh, a minute to acknowledge and honor, uh, the veterans that we have on our board. Mr. DeBois. Uh, the veterans that, uh, are employed by Unica County School District Number One. Uh, and I just think that, uh, I want to congratulate all the principals, uh, for the job that they did today in, in their assemblies and honoring, uh, the veterans for, uh, this day. And it's, it's a special day for me in the fact that, um, my great-great-grandfather was a Civil War vet. My grandfather was a World War Two vet, or a World War One vet. My father was a, uh, World War Two vet who was part of four island invasions in the South Pacific. And my son is a retired, uh, veteran from the United States Air Force. Uh, so I'm very proud of, of, of that. And what makes this a special day for me, and I'm sorry that this is kind of personal, but my son, it's his birthday today. So, uh, it's a special day for us and, uh, I just want to say thanks and honor everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So, um, before we adopt the agenda for today, there needs to be a modification. Superintendent...
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, I recommend that you have a short executive session after all the items, action items. The, it'd be the last thing we do. Uh, this would be for, I believe, personnel and real estate. So, uh, we recommend that you add that to the agenda.
Motion to add executive session to the agenda.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. And that will go down as... What's our number for that one, then? Eight A? Cause it's not an action item.
No, it would actually be, uh, ten.
Ten.
Right before adjourn.
Right before ten. So adjourn would be eleven.
Executive session there and then we'll adjourn after that with no business to be taken.
So that'll be action item number ten.
Not action item, just...
Not an action item, but yeah. Sorry. Okay. All right. Perfect. So I need a motion to adopt the modified agenda as identified.
Second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Item A, minutes approval and the payment of bills.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent items as you've indicated.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion?
Jenny.
Jenny, I'm sorry. I need a do better letter. So, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. We will now move on to our presentations. He's so patiently waiting for it.
Chairman Peterson, I'd just like to introduce Clark's, we call the Unita Camp Group. Time is yours.
Well, we came tonight, um, mostly just to thank the board and give a small presentation of what happened at Unica Science School this year. And so we have a slideshow and two students here to talk about it. I'll be scrolling through the slideshow while they speak, so I'll turn the time to them.
Hello, members of the school board, teachers and guests. My name is Henry Hoogman and of, and I'm a fifth grader at Clark Elementary. I'm here tonight to tell you about my experiences at the Unita Science Camp and why I think it's really important that students keep getting the chance to go. When I, when we went up to the Unitas, it felt like stepping into a whole new world. We stayed in cabins, hiked through beautiful mountains and even got to hear elk beagling at night. It wasn't just fun, it was an adventure that made science come to life in a way that you can't get from a textbook. Every day we learned something new. We met forest rangers who taught us how to protect the land, firefighters who showed us how they fight wildfires, and people who explained how logging and pollination are part of keeping the forest healthy. I never realized how much... I never realized how much science goes into taking care of nature until I got to see it up close. The food was great too. We looked forward to every meal. But even better than the food were the friendships we made and the teamwork we learned. We got to clean up and take care of the cabins and look out for each other on the hikes. This camp helped me understand how connecting everything is, from trees to bees to people. It made me want to learn more about science and it made a lot of us think about jobs we might want to do when we grow up, like being a forest ranger or a scientist. I really hope future fifth graders get to go to the Unita Science Camp too. It's something we'll always remember, not just because it was fun, but because it taught us how to care about our world and see science in real life. Thank you for supporting this program and helping kids like me have experiences that make learning exciting and meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well done, by the way.
Yeah.
I don't think Dave does that well.
Hi, my name is Kinley Harding and I want to talk to you about my time at Unita Science School. I wanted to tell you about my favorite thing I did, but there were too many things. I really enjoyed learning from the Forest Service firefighters. Turning on the sirens was pretty cool, too. I enjoyed seeing all the different communities in the river and learning how to tell if a river is healthy or not by looking at the fish in it. Another thing I loved was studying all the plants and trees. They let us drill a hole into a tree to see how old it was. Some trees are so old. Also, did you know that osman trees produce their own sunscreen? One of the best parts was getting to make memories with my friends and make new friends. If I could give any... If I could give any of the fourth graders advice, it would be to go, don't miss the chance to learn about our community or miss the opportunity to make memories with your friends that you will remember forever. I want to finish by thanking the school board for giving us the opportunity to make memories. Thank you.
Thank you, very good.
I just want to echo the thanks that they brought up. We want to thank the school board, Superintendent Thomas, for a couple of things, letting Randy Barker come with us. We want to thank him as well as the youth camp and what they did. Mrs. Fessler is great to be able to scramble to make staffing work during that week for us. And the central kitchen was amazing in helping us get the food there as well as transportation, supplying us with Suburbans to be able to get our food and supplies there besides the bus. And then Smiths Food and Drug has been a great partner to have as well. It's a team effort. We appreciate all the support and help that we get and we love the opportunity to take these kids up there and you can see what benefit it is and what they gain. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we can move on. I believe Mr. Kohler.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
Great student.
Fifth and sixth.
Just fifth.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, thanks for this opportunity. We're here to talk about our improvement plan. As you know, we were partially meeting at the high school and we know our direction and I want to make sure that we understand everything we're working on at the school. I love our school, I love our staff and our students. And I feel good about what we're working on this year. So I just wanted to just kind of paint the picture of where we're at on the successes. Some of these, these are all following the... The high school has seven accountability measures that we are responsible for at the state. And I just want to point out a couple of things. We've put a lot of energy into making sure kids are ready for after-high school. So a couple of highlights. We had 111 AP exams passed with three or higher, 1,077 college credits, 153 industry-recognized credentials. We've never been that high and we're continuing to push that. Our seniors on the, juniors and seniors on the ACT, all these things are super important for kids and what they decide to do after school. We were actually exceeding in our freshman credits. We met all these other areas, ELL, graduation. Our graduation rate actually went up a little bit than it's been for the past couple of years. And so we're going to continue to keep working on that. The metrics that we didn't meet are growth and equity. And I have achievement. Achievement, growth and equity, the first three, those are based on ninth and 10th grade, English and math. That's what those are based on. And we were at the cut score on all three of those, really. So moving achievement, we met it, but making it higher, past the cut score on how our younger kids perform will not only help achievement but help growth and equity. We actually missed growth and equity by one point, both of them. And I think having both of those not meet was the reason that we've got a little bit of a wake-up call to make sure we're helping our students, especially the ones that struggle coming into high school on our core. So these are the three areas we sent to the state. I'm going to go through each of them really quick. So our data-informed planning, you can see, just, there's more words there than I want, but I, basically using our data from our assessment system, our STAR, YTOP interims, everything that we have to make sure that we're not only giving feedback to kids, standards, reference feedback, but also placing them in the correct tier-two and three classes. Tier-three, we worked in our tier-three classrooms, including how many adults are in there, smaller, making sure that they are hyper-focused on the skills that kids are lacking, not only at grade level, but the four. And making sure they're in those correct classes. And we're using all these tools as much as we can and that model has changed a little bit every year to make sure. Our equity students in particular, we're tracking every one of them. Every teacher that has an equity student knows who they are and we're, on our end, tracking their, not only their placement in classes, but how they're doing on grades, STAR exam, all that stuff and making sure we're getting growth. Under instruction, we have worked for a long time on our unit planning, but we're learning, the unit plans we made six, seven years ago really don't get to the level of addressing the supports kids need. So part of our goal that we've acknowledged is making sure the progression of learning is defined, making sure that's given to parents, to students. In high school, kids want to know what they're there for and we've got to be clear every day with them. And then making sure that we're, when we do assessments in school and then you get to, for example, to an ACT or AP where not only is it timed, but the depth of knowledge is deeper than maybe we're used to, we've got to simulate those better, make sure we're reaching the correct depth of knowledge on the stuff we're teaching. And then professional development, we spend a lot of time with, especially math, science and English, in developing our co-teaching, grouping of students daily and making sure we know what we want out of those kids. Lori Ivy's been a great partner with us. This is our third year, I think, with her. And she was actually in the building last week. Co-teaching is not only just how we teach, but how we plan and how we work with every kid. So there are some kids that need a lot of attention, a lot of help and we're spending a lot of time there. I'm not worried about our upper level, especially as older, as they get, and taking our APs and how our teachers are preparing for that. We're going to continue to push those higher. We've really got to focus on our kids that need those supports. So this is kind of the wrap-up of all that and I've kind of gone through that, but just making sure that we develop our capacity further. We're at 772 kids in the high school right now and making sure we know each one of them and getting them what they need. So, anything I forgot? Do you guys have any questions on all that?
So is Lori Ivy an outside consultant?
Yep, she's from Green River. She's worked in Green River for a long time. She's worked with our district, I don't know how many years, but yeah. That's what she would be considered, right? Yeah. So, yeah. Green Rivers are really, their student body's almost the same size as ours. We have a lot of similarities and we work with them a lot on a lot of things. She's also their head basketball coach. She wore red the other day, so it was good.
We're especially into special education and supporting co-teaching classrooms, giving all the parent professionals sort of lines down, making sure that all the adults in the classroom have roles and responsibilities and making sure that we're doing absolutely everything we can for all of those students that are in those classrooms.
Some of those classrooms have three people. You can't tell who the parent is, who the teacher is. I mean, it's really developing daily. The planning is the big piece of that. What is each person doing with which kids? They need individual, small-group attention.
Any other questions at all?
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, thanks, we're working hard, so appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is Brendan next?
Yep.
We'll just sit down up here. Mr. Ellis likes coming up to these.
Okay, that ends our presentations. Fine, perfect timing. We will now move on to our discussion items.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, you can see before you, Mr. Ellis, our excellent teacher, and you have Principal Kohler and Jaren Dennis. So Jaren was here bravely last month and talking about Red Devil Ranch. So now we have more information and all three of them are going to tag-team and answer all your questions. So at the end of this, there is an opportunity for you to approve or not to approve whatever you think is needed moving forward. So gentlemen, take over.
So Chairman Peterson, members of the board, we ask that we come back and have an opportunity for you to really kind of ask some questions in regards to the project or projects that are happening on Red Devil Ranch. And so we've got, as Superintendent Thomas said, we've got Mr. Ellis here who is doing a wonderful job with our ranch and developing and growing this. And naturally, last month's discussion was centered around the center pivot, the things that need to take place so that we can fully utilize and implement that center pivot and what will need to take place from there. So I don't know. Mr. Peterson, would you like me to recap everything or are we comfortable kind of moving forward and allowing you as a board to ask the questions?
No, I'd like to recap a little bit on here because you got most definitely some more numbers than was... You kind of were hinting at some numbers last time, but in here, we've got some more solid numbers. So let's recap it with some of the more direct or more reliable numbers that we have.
I'd be happy to. So when this project first started, naturally, we needed to work with Rocky Mountain Power. And our hopes or in our anticipation was that when we first had the conversations with them, that they would basically remove the poles if we provided the conduit and had everything ready, that they would, pretty much in kind, put in the new wire and do that. Naturally, once everything was laid out and we got all the information, we were surprised to find that by removing the poles, putting the conduit in, there was going to be an additional charge for the actual electrical lines themselves, which at that time was going to be near $40,000 plus. So we recognized that just the cost of putting in the conduit and doing that work at $40,000 plus what the Rocky Mountain Power was requiring, that was, right there was going to be near $100,000. And so, meeting with Rocky Mountain Power, we looked at some other options. And that's where you see on this map here, where we determined instead of burying it, doing a direct bury in conduit, they would bring in new power poles coming along the property line here and then that would meet the needs that would be needed to continue power on to Davis's and Day's and moving further. This was... Yep. So it was actually cheaper for them to put up new poles and new power lines than it was for us to provide the conduit and do the other. So with that, we've always known as kind of part of the project that we needed to get power to the pivot itself. And so, I don't know how many of you've ever done work with Rocky Mountain Power. It's not a quick process. So it's really taken us almost 18 months to kind of work through some things. Naturally, we had to know exactly what it was that we needed and once we determined that, then we could move forward. And so, based on what we were trying to accomplish, we needed a 200-amp circuit to be able to do the things that we needed. And so, once everything was in place, Rocky Mountain Power decided that the current transformer that sits about right here where my finger is would be the ideal spot to be able to feed the power for the pivot itself. And naturally with that, we had to step that transformer down. And so you'll see in your board packets there, that quote from CD Electric for about $33,000? Is that right?
Thirty-three eight.
Yeah, thirty-three eight. And so what that would do is provide the adequate power for not only the pivot, but the pumps that were going to be used. And I can have Mr. Ellis talk about kind of the extra pumps that he's looking at there. As part of the initial grant that Mr. Ellis received, not only was the pivot included with that, but they did provide the wiring and we'll be actually installing or doing the final connections with that. Mr. Ellis's class has been working the last month and a half in getting their conduit. So they've run a three-inch conduit from the pivot itself to where our transformer's going to be. And we'll have that wire pulled. So at this point in time, once we get the adequate funding, we can have CDs finish what they need to do so that we can power the pivot itself and the pumps. And then if we can, be able to move forward, let Rocky Mountain move forward in setting the new poles and the new wiring to continue service to the other residents down the line. So, questions that you have from there?
So does that decrease the cost to Rocky Mountain Power? What is their cost to put new poles in?
Their new, their cost? Forty-two, forty-six thousand.
So you're still talking eighty thousand dollars?
Forty-six thousand five hundred.
And how many acres, 20, 25, are we paying this for?
Fifty.
That you'll irrigate?
Fifty acres. The whole section of school district property is 60. The bus barn takes up about 10 acres and the rest is Red Devil Ranch.
And you'll do both sides of the road?
Sure, yeah, what's right next to you also, yes. See, if I, I'll proceed with what we're going to do. We just put in our electrical line with three-inch conduit. That will power the center pivot. Our next part of going on to this is putting a Kewanda screen in the ditch. It's the same one that the guilds use out to their ranch. We did a lot of research on it, talking to a lot of different people and that was the best system. It continues water on to whoever owns the state lease or runs state lease behind us, which is the Davis's, providing their allotment of water. We'll run a, point right here. From the center pivot, it will come up, if the water line comes up, it'll come past this ditch and then turn and come towards the state, or the bus barn. This will be the location, I'm going to draw on your paper. This right here will be the location of the Kewanda screen. That will allow water to, if the Davis's choose to divert it and go down this way to their state lease or further on and hit this down here, we'll continue to have water being pulled from our portion. It will also run a, so direction of water starts here, goes down, hits that corner, comes over to the center pivot. Our pump is down here, along with our center pivot start for electricity. And then we're going to turn around when we shut, because we don't have to run the pivot the whole time. It'll run for three days, or a day and a half, 72 hours, sorry, half of 72 hours. And then we can turn it off and we will turn water on to this area, right here, and also this area. So the center pivot will swing around and do most of these. At the same time, while we're irrigating, we have a lot of runoff sometimes. And so we'll catch that water and put it back up in these corners, in these areas, and also along here where we graze, these areas along here during the year. But that water will come back up, turn and come over. It'll come down... It'll come down here. And then we'll be able to divert it through lines we already have purchased that we run above ground so we can just drain them easily. It's a bunch of two-inch. And that runs this just fine. And then over here, it'll continue. It's all a six-inch line. We will come over and drop it below the road. It'll end right here and then it will be above the ground. There is a gap, or a fiber line that comes through that we chose not to dig next to just because of cost. So we will have an above-ground main line and then a wheel line that will stretch here. And I think it's about nine sets that it would take to get across there. And if you're doing 12-hour sets, 36 hours, do that every other, it won't take us very long to get across everything with 12-hour sets.
But you only have it for five days.
No, that's not how it works necessarily. I talked to the state about our water rights at least two different times. The first time I talked to them, they gave me a lot of great information. They said, "Well, technically, shares is a deal. It's an agreement between whatever is down ditch." And that's fine, that's good. But I know across the road right here, our neighbors take their water shares all the time. For the center pivot to work, we have to take our portion, our water right, adjudicated water right. We have to take that all the time. Everything else, which is, it's neat to find out the information of how much water comes through. When I talked to the state this last time, they said, "Well, you've been saying that it's 40 acres, but technically, it is 50 acres." Especially since we put this, almost eight acres back into play. Trying to think, what else they said?
You're talking about the Pexton ground, right?
Yes.
And you say they take their lease to the Simpson's?
Yes.
And they take their adjudicated water and then they put in their...
Continuously.
Yes.
Yes, that's all I'm saying, yes.
But so do we because we share a ditch.
It's true, yes.
So we only get certain days where they can continue daily, we can't?
Well, what can't we?
Well, if you have it, then you have it. When we have it, we have it. So that means you don't have it when we have it.
That's what we have been doing, but we're no longer going to be doing that.
Then you're going to put in a flume?
The Kewanda system, yes.
And you know how much water is adjudicated to 40, 50 acres?
Fifty acres. It is 321 gallons per minute. And we have, we, when we purchased the center pivot, we put in for a meter that would measure that. On top of that, the flume is designed, because I had to go through, we paid quite a bit of money for this little metal flume. It will only allow that much water to come through at one time.
Okay, now I need another question here. The ditch goes up and down.
Yes.
It does not stay at a constant flow.
Yes.
So when you say you're going to get that many gallons, that doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get that at the time.
It's true. We continuously work on water out there, don't we? You can't just leave it.
You can't leave it and you cannot assume you're going to get it.
No, I don't think anybody's assuming. What, the best part about the Kewanda system is you have to have an outlet. It's only supposed to have a certain amount of water that runs over the screen. And once that's going, if you have more than that, that's bad. You want to make sure that there's, all the rest of the water is diverted or keeps on going through. There's a great science behind it. It's really neat. I don't know if Mr. Guild would be willing to talk about their Kewanda system, how they work. I don't know how your system is, but I know in all the engineers that I've talked to, we were designing this, they said, "This is how the system works." You only want to have about three-quarters of an inch running over the top of it.
Have you talked to J U B about this, knowing that they're putting in the system?
Yes, and that's the best part because once they get their system put in, we'll be able to hook directly right up to it. And we still have our water meter. We still can say, "We are not taking more water than this." But in the end, we wanted to make sure that we had enough water going over to Davis's for their state lease. We felt that was important and right. Along with that, it's hard, shares is hard, going back and forth because there's some days that we went out there and there was no water. And Mike was running around trying to figure out what happened. Somebody blocked the ditch off. You know, and it's been good working up there. We feel like this will improve the dispersment and efficiency of our water going across the system. We researched this well over two years ago. Threw you when we were putting in for the grant, got the grant, and then continued onward. I think it'll be a great system. Less waste of water is, you can see, I mean, Janice, you've probably seen this, there's a lot of water that gets wasted when it runs downhill too fast.
What we need to do is put a culvert from the Pexton ground.
There's a lot of water there.
No, really, that would solve, that would probably be cheaper.
So on a personal note, we would love to find a way to be able to stop that extra water that happens because it is creating havoc on the asphalt.
With the bus barn. And when they planned that, somebody was asleep at the wheel.
So, but yes, if we could divert that water...
We would all have plenty.
We would all have plenty because we see where a lot of that water sits. Anyways, this is the report of the power, not the...
Yeah, we discussed the water. We need to discuss the power. So I guess, on the numbers out there, what, did anybody add that together real quick? Thirty-three eight and forty... Forty-six five.
Forty-six five, thirty-three eight. You're just shy of 5,000.
So I guess, you're coming to the board. And I think you need to be looking that direction over there. Because we, yeah, Jeff, no, I don't think so.
So Mr. Peterson, our Chairman Peterson, prior to last board meeting, I did have a conversation with Mr. Williams to let him know kind of what would be taking place, making him aware, depending on what the decision would be here, so that it wasn't bling sighting.
But I think for us to make an educated decision, we need to know if there's money and where that money is going to come from. So that's kind of what we need to find out. And I don't know if Mr. Williams has an answer for that, if there's a place for it to come from.
I can respond to that, Chairman Peterson. These purchases are one-time purchases. That's what we have a carryover for. So this would come out of the carryover. How that would work is we can take money from the carryover and then do a budget adjustment in June to indicate that money's gone out.
We're sitting at a number of unbound, but of that, you're unallocated unbound from the first point. As of July or June 30th. So if you remember that draft I sent to the board of that, which I recommend you not spend at all.
Well, I'm glad to hear that number because we're going back into executive session. Anyway.
I have one more question. What about when adjudicated water's off and you only have so many shares of Sulfur Creek? What are you going to do?
So at that point, we will, working with our neighbors, if Mike needs water below us, that's fine. He would take a certain amount that would continue over the, over that barrier. And we would take our portion and pull it at that time. So you guys would make out like bandits and do pretty well.
Would that have enough water for, because if people do not put in for Sulfur Creek water, you know what it's like.
It is tough, but usually if it's a short year...
You can run more out of your holes.
Yep, if it's a short year, usually everybody puts in for it. And a lot of that continues with just being good neighbors and taking care of one another. Last year, we put in for three shares. Clark put in for three shares and Mark Days put in for three shares. So it filled the canal, made it, or the ditch, made it good. For us, we'd be using less water. So we wouldn't be calling for three shares. But it would make it so if you and Mike needed to have shares going on to the state lease, you could do that. And you'd have the same, if not more, water. Because we, you'd get the extra that we wouldn't use.
In 30 years, I haven't seen actually more water than we need.
You know, it's good though because the work that you guys have done, that they did last year on the ditches, it improved it. I would say it was at least another quarter amount of water. There's a lot of ditch work that came through. The city did a lot of work. I know that Clark went up along his side and did a lot of work. Improvements made that much better. You could tell a difference of more water coming through and less seepage out there, other places. It was a lot of hard work that the canal company, which Mike is a president of, and he's aware of those things. He did a great job.
On pivot, ultimately is going to make this more efficient.
It will be much more efficient.
So I think it's great.
There's spots across that ground that you look, that kind of that banana-looking shape up through there, right above that hardly gets water. And we did a better job this last year because we had a little more water, it seemed like, when it was pushing. But the best thing we can do is just disperse that. We'll do some more ground till, helping on that. It's going to improve it a lot. That acreage that was closest to the hospital, that produced quite a bit of hay in comparison to other years. That's the further part up here, right next to it. We've tried to add some water to that to make it look a little bit better where it was right next to the hospital, make the school district look a little better. I don't know if we did or not, but we sure tried to look better with more hay bales out there, I think.
And then we did discuss the pole barn. And you were needing like an engineer to put their stamp of approval on it. Do we have any information on how that is going? Because all of the materials were donated, if I'm understanding.
We had either previous or donated.
Yes.
So, yes, after going back and forth, I've got an engineer who's willing to, first came in at 12,000 and we've negotiated him down to 5,000 if he can do a little advertising on our fencing out there, on our barn itself, and so...
If it saves us that much money, yes, definitely.
So I feel right now that out of my general manias, I should be able to cover that 5,000 so that we can proceed. I told Mr. Ellis, our first priority is working on this. Once this is moved forward, then we will open up that book again and look at that. But I believe we can now go forward. Get the engineer drawings so that the city's happy. We can get the final permitting. And then Mr. Ellis has all the, all the materials. And with his kids, we'll be able to build that according to the plans.
So it's a fantastic opportunity for the kids to do that, so.
Tell us, Mr. Ellis, how many students are involved and how they eventually get out there? People don't, people don't know what we have is a rarity. In this state, I don't know that anybody else is even doing this. I came out of Idaho as an ag teacher, nobody did it. So I'm committing, Mr. Ellis, he's putting forth an effort that we're really, our students are benefiting from. So I just like to know how many kids you're looking at.
In the program, in fact, I was counting that up today, we're about 95 of unduplicated. But I'll be honest, I have kids that like to take two or three classes at a time. I have one kid in four classes. So if it was open seats in the class, I'm about 120 or more. I do teach extra on one of my preps to make it work for the school ranch. We double up seventh and eighth hour to have enough time to go out and work. Before, we had a schedule change. It was, I was able to take every class out. And we'd be out there all day long and we were able to progress. Now, we get three class periods out there, two hours each time, so six hours a week. We're trying to do a lot of work in six hours. And sometimes it goes awry. And we kind of lick our wounds and come back the next day and say, "Okay, we've got to do it better." It would be nice to be able to get more kids out there, but 55 minutes is not enough time for that. So that's a little tough, but I don't know. I think sometimes we're rubbing off on other schools because I noticed one of my friends, another ag teacher across the state, they went out and got funding to put up a big barn that they teach out of, out there. So there's fantastic things going across the state. We're trying to do something, I really, I'm passionate about kids learning how to do things with their hands. I think it makes them more employable. There's nothing worse than someone that's extremely book smart that has no experience in what they're doing. Not saying that book smarts bad. I think it's 100% good. But if you can mix that with some good work ethic, those kids are unstoppable. And I love sitting back and being able to see them figure out problems for themselves. That's what it's all about.
Well, and I just want to piggyback on what Dave said. We are extremely fortunate to have Mr. Ellis over our ag program. I would dare say we have the best ag program in the state.
Don't say that too loud. There's Target, no kidding.
And around the surrounding areas. So I appreciate everything that you're doing for our ag kids because that's fantastic, especially for the community that we live in. I think it's very important.
Thank you.
Who heard? Who started this? Me.
So do we have any more questions for them at all?
Are you looking to eventually change crops on that at all?
That's the whole purpose. We can diversify and get a little further. I would love to be able to, you know, doing shares. And then Janice brought up a good point. It's hard to run water through. We won't be able to do anything until that pipeline comes in that we'd be able to water twice. Alfalfa is a great crop. That's what I would be putting in or some other things. Our growing season's a little tough, but I think we can play with that a little bit. Or work with a little bit. It's, I don't think you play with them other than you're sure it beats up on you. But if we, when we get that pipeline in that they're working on, it's going to be a few years out. But once that comes in, we'll be able to, you can call your water a whole lot easier than trying to run it down a ditch, so.
What it is also is there's people that take water out of the ditch that are not supposed to, which this would stop. So once again, we can't predict how much water.
But it'll be pressurized, what, 45 psi?
Then it will, yes.
It'll be good.
And we met with Brian just yesterday.
That's good. For us, we ended up investing in a pump, a 20 horsepower pump to do that, and then the meter, and we were able to lock it down where it's supposed to be. Yeah, thank you.
Chairman Peterson, just to give you a visual representation of our carryover, John just printed these off. Unassigned carryover.
You shouldn't have done it.
So in terms of carryover, we are, as we thought about our last session, we're healthy.
Okay, perfect.
We're not going to build a wreck, Sam, remember?
Sweating pool.
Well, if he digs the ditch big enough, we'd go swim out there at the ditch.
Thank you again.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, we'll move on to our next discussion item. B, board meeting schedule for '26-'27.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, we do have that in your packet. It's roughly no changes. Second Tuesday of the month. We do tentatively schedule work sessions. Haven't had to have them. Third Wednesday in July, so that's moving forward. Very little changes. Again, the board has the option to change from, I think we used to do it. We moved it for a board member to go to the first Tuesday, I think. Worked, it was a little harder for business office to get the warrants done, but... If you guys are okay with that?
Does anybody feel like we need to change? No.
No. This isn't approved today, it's approved next month. Just for you to look at it. So if you have any conflicts, you can take care of those.
Awesome, all right, thank you.
You bet.
Any comments on that at all? Concerns? All right, we'll move on to discussion item C. The delegate assembly items for consideration.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, you know, annually, at the winter conference for Wyoming School Boards, they have a delegate assembly. Dan is your delegate at the assembly. They only have three items that will go before the delegate assembly. I have a feeling that what's happened is for the last two years, I haven't even taken the time to put ours in there because we've never gotten any leverage. Wyoming School Board, I don't know if has ever passed any of these pieces of legislation. So I now take my concerns to Senator Schuler, and she provides it that direction. But this should be an influential document because it's the power of Wyoming School Boards behind it. So if you, if you look at it, the first thing they say is they only affirm one of these, and that is 2027.1, special education placement reimbursement. Kind of what we've done in the past is I'll just quickly go over these. You give Dan heads up, heads no. And Dan will vote your conscience basically at the delegate assembly. The first one, special education placement reimbursement. It simply allows additional reimbursements per the year. So these high-cost placements, you don't have to wait a full year for reimbursement. They break it up into four pay periods. We've never really had an issue. We've never really had an issue. Again, we're potentially have a pretty good cash flow in our carryover, that's why we keep the carryover where we do. I see it as a positive things for districts that are smaller that have roughly the same challenge we have, a very high placement and if it's ten percent of their budget that they're using for this placement, it will be reimbursed, but they don't get it for a full year. So this changes that. So my recommendation would you, would that Dan vote positive for this? Wyoming School Board's already affirmed it, which is a pretty good thing, but anyway. Any questions on that one? Two zero two six point two is termination hearing timeframes. We've been fortunate, we haven't had too many termination hearings, but they are a nightmare. And why they're a nightmare is if you look at Wyoming statute, Wyoming statute allows anyone that is being dismissed, the opportunity for a hearing at the cost of the school district through the government hearing office, the state hearing office, and it takes forever. Even though by statute it says you have to have your first kind of meeting at forty-five days, it never works that long. So if you have a teacher that you're potentially terminating or employee you're terminating that has a hearing, you may pay that individual's salary as long as a year and a half until the hearing takes place. This tries to shorten those timeframes and tighten the timeframes. I think they can pass a resolution, but I don't know if they're gonna find more people to do these hearings. So I think it's a great idea, I just don't know if they may tell them what, yeah, you can tell us to go quicker, but we're not going slow because we want to, we're going slow because there's a lot of work. So interesting thing, and it kind of links to the next one too, is, is if you have a teacher that hasn't done what's expected of them, they can ask for a hearing, we have to pay their portion of the hearing and our portion of the hearing and we cannot suspend them without pay. So this takes some of that into consideration, to tighten those timelines. So again, I think it's not a negative thing, I don't know why anyone wouldn't want to do it, but that's what I see. Any questions on that one? Okay, last one is twenty-two six point three, pay considerations for individuals charged with certain crimes. This is kind of what I, I mentioned before. Currently, the rationale, if a district pursues a termination of an employee, the termination hearing can drag on indefinitely. A district can be caught in a difficult position because Wyoming statute twenty-one seven one oh two only allows for the suspension of pay for the employee following the hearing. This, thus, a hearing can languish for months while an employee continues to receive pay and benefits. This is true even if an employee is charged with the crime. These issues are causing Wyoming school districts to pay out substantial amounts of money in pay and benefits while a hearing is drug out over many months or years. So even if we have definitely cause to terminate, they still have the right to a hearing and we cannot suspend them without pay. So the pay continues. We have been fortunate, we haven't bounced into that, but it makes sense to me. This is a call to amend twenty-one seven one oh two to allow superintendents to suspend teachers without pay under specific circumstances instead of only after a hearing takes place with language such as a superintendent may suspend without regular compensation a licensed employee who has been officially charged but not yet convicted of a felony or a crime involving moral turpitude or immorality. If the charge is dismissed or if the employee is found not guilty, the employee must be reinstated with back pay plus interest and normal seniority. So these situations where you would fire someone and it's a pretty heinous situation, they could not be paid. They'd be suspended without pay until the hearing's done. If a mistake is made, they'll be reimbursed. The last time we went to a hearing, it was over a year. And if you recall, we did not come out in favor in that hearing, but the employee had already moved on to another district. So he, we were paying him and so was the other district by the time we received judgment. So there was no punitive charges on our part because he was able to get a job and continue working in another district. But it was over a year and a half, I think. That was before I became high school principal, so.
Wow.
So this is, I think is a good one too. Any comments, any concerns?
No.
So it sounds like thumbs up, thumbs up on all three for Dan?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, that's all I had, Chairman.
Okay.
Yep.
Appreciate it. We will now move on to public comments.
No.
Who said no?
I don't think you say no to that.
You're sitting in public comments? You're starting to look at them?
Moving on now.
Okay, move on. Okay, we do have one. So, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to recognize Sheridan Hatch, who's with us this evening. Sheridan is doing her senior project with the, an enviable task of shadowing the business officer here in this district.
Why would you choose that? Of all things you could do for a senior project.
So, but she's, she's been great.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you, that's fantastic.
Yes.
Sheridan, I taught you better than that.
All right, no public comments, we'll move now to our action items. So, I need a motion. Uh, we don't have any personnel, so we can move on from there. So, I need a motion to approve the funding for the Red Devil Ranch Center Pivot Electrical System.
That, that is eighty thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, second.
Eighty thousand, three hun, okay.
First was Jenny, second was Brian.
Yes, any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
We said nay, Janice.
Janice.
Who was the second, I'm sorry?
Brian.
Brian.
Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, we will now move on to action item number C, the athletic trainer contract renewal.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, the reason why you're getting this now is, remember, this is a contract that's paid by Star Valley Health and through the process of going back and forth, we redefined her contract because she had a baby and so the terms have changed and it just took time to get to me, to Jeff, back to me, back to them, took more time from them, back to me, but this is a, I think, a very good contract and a very great opportunity for us, so it's something we want to continue, of course, so our trainers being paid by Star Valley Health.
So does the contract that she's currently under terminate at the end of the school, at the end of the year or school year?
She's actually operating on a tentative contract right now.
On a tentative contract right now, okay.
This one. So we agreed to the terms, we just had to have the legal people work out those conditions, so it's good.
She'll officially be under contract?
That's right.
When?
Soon as we sign this.
Soon as I, yeah.
Soon as you approve it, I guess.
Okay, motion to approve the renewal. Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. We will now move on to action item number D, to approve the comments and responses to the comments, notice to adopt Rule CKA.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, remember last month, we brought forward the single comment we received during the comment period and our response to that, one of them was a legal response from Mr. Phillips, that hasn't changed, no questions added, good response, I think. I had some responses to the questions and we had some discussion about that. The only thing that we modified is anything you guys ask us to, dealt with a position that states we would encourage you not to concealed carry. After looking at the law, if you look at six eight one oh five, there's a portion in there that any person that dissuades or does not allow someone to concealed carry who has a legal permit is violating the law. So we thought, yeah, can be charged with a misdemeanor and go to jail. So we thought it would be better to remove that portion from our signage. Again, that's what I originally offered in the comments, so that's been taken out, but everything else is basically the same. The plan is after you approve of this, if you approve it, I'll bring probably next month or the month after that, the signage, the new signage that we'll put on the buildings. Very similar to what we have now, but what will be added is open carry is not allowed with the law states, so. What, what you are approving here is not only the comments, your comments to the comments, but you're approving the entire package. The notice, all the documents associated with the notice, we made some minor changes just to update them as we've gone and so we think it's good that you approve the whole packet, we call it. So if you look in your, on board docs, you can see all that information or links to all that information, very similar to what we did in January twenty-twenty-two when we approved that packet of information. So your first step is to approve the packet with all the information in it and then the next one will be to approve Rule CKA.
Sounds good. So I need a motion to approve the comments and responses to comments, notice to adopt Rule CKA.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, said I did approve the packet that's presented to us at this time.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Jenny. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. We now need to move on to, I need a motion to approve Rule CKA.
So moved.
Second that motion.
I have.
Jenny and David.
Jenny and David. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
No?
One nay, yeah.
Okay, one nay.
Jessica, no.
Yep. Ayes have it, motion carries. We will now move on to action item F, approve the memorandum of understanding by and between UNA County School District Number One and the UNA County Bosse's.
Chairman Peterson, we discussed this just briefly in executive session, this is an agreement we've been working on for, well, a couple of months now. Assistant Superintendent Rigby's kind of led the charge on this, working with the Bosse's and Mr. Adam Phillips to come up with an agreement. It's a good agreement, I think we protected our rights and interests, that's why we have an agreement and I think Bosse's also appreciates the agreement we have. Mr. Rigby, anything to add?
I don't think so, I mean, if you have some questions, I think the updated agreement helps us, sets some dates where we're gonna make sure that we're communicating with them so that they can do their budgeting. It's, I think it's a really good agreement.
Any discussion on that at all? I guess I can ask later. So I need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding by and between UNA County School District Number One and the UNA Bosse's.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between UNA County School District Number One and UNA Bosse's.
Second. Did you get those? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. We will now go on to action item number G, approve the studentary, the student disciplinary action that was discussed in the executive session earlier today.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Brian, second by Jenny, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. I now need a motion to approve the Evanston High School Improvement Plan as presented earlier in today's meeting.
So moved.
Which one?
Jenny.
Motion by Dan?
No, Caleb.
Caleb, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Need a second.
Okay, second.
Second by Jenny. Oh, okay.
Sorry, you weren't first, Jenny.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. I now need.
Board roundtable.
Yep, we'll go to board roundtable, more than ten. So we will now move into the board roundtable. Any comments from the board at all at this time? I do have a couple of questions real quick. So going in there, I do have a question, if we're going, when we go into executive session, that I could invite Mr. Williams in? There's a couple of questions that I have for, no, sorry, John, yeah. You don't have any money, I want to talk to you. Okay, I need a, a motion to go into the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, we will now move into executive session. Yeah, then we'll come back out and adjourn from here, yeah.
Everything worked out. Traffic here, since we can get it on the chair.